20th 2020 Meeting is called to order. Teresa Lawson will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone. So good to see everyone. And tonight I'm going to be working, this is my first meeting, so I'm working from an agenda and from BOE Connect. So patience, patience. Everyone's present but Board Member Amy Johnson. Thank you. Okay, we need a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
The motion was made by Jessica Fogarty to approve the agenda as presented, and a second by Pat Welsh. All those in favor, raise your hand please. All those opposed, passes six to nothing. Okay. We have lots of great celebrating to do tonight. And first up is our Clyde Smith Jr. Leadership Award. And I'm fortunate to get to present that tonight. Imelu Huddleston has been unanimously selected as our Telahoma City Schools Board of Education's 2020 Clyde Smith Jr. Leadership Award recipient. Imelu Smotherman graduated from Telahoma High School in 1948 and graduated from Middle Tennessee State College in 1952 with a degree in education. Her first teaching position was at East Lincoln Elementary School, where she continued to work until 1963. The now Mrs. Huddleston moved to the new Robert E. Lee Elementary School upon its opening and taught there for 22 years. In 1981, Mrs. Huddleston was selected as the Telahoma Teacher of the Year. Superintendent Dr. Donald Embry wrote, "Since 1952, Mrs. Huddleston has been one of our most loyal and conscientious teachers. The students that have gone through her classes have benefited greatly because of her concern for them. She has maintained those high ideals, which are most rare and highly desirable to an educational program. Her devotion has made and will continue to make a most significant impact upon our community and the lives of the children in which she has come in contact. Her cooperation with peers and the school administration has helped to make our school system one which we can justly be proud. Mrs. Imelu Huddleston epitomizes the image of a professional teacher." In the last report before her retirement in 1985, Principal Marilyn Morris stated that Mrs. Huddleston is a calm, serene teacher who always comes through. Children love being in her room. Mrs. Imelu Smotherman Huddleston passed away in 2011. Her husband, Richard Huddleston, passed away one year ago today at the age of 93. This award is named for former school board member Clyde Smith, who passed away in November 2010. Mr. Smith served as a TCS School Board Member for 21 years. His time included being Chairman of the Board as well as President of the Tennessee School Board Association. The Clyde Smith Jr. Leadership Award was established to recognize excellence in educational leadership. Mrs. Huddleston is our 20th exemplary recipient. One of her students gave me a little message. The principal of East Lincoln Elementary School, Scott Hargrove, shared with me that Mrs. Huddleston was one of the best ever. I was scared of her at the first of the school year and vividly remember being upset on the last day of school because I didn't want to leave her classroom. She was tough, but I knew she loved us. My ears are big because she tugged on them quite a bit because of... What do y'all think with Scott Hargrove?
Talking.
Talking, yes. I was and will always be an Imelu Huddleston fan. Let us celebrate Mrs. Huddleston. And because we are so limited in what we're able to do this year, we are going to add Mrs. Huddleston to our celebration next October. And we will get to celebrate her again. She was wonderful and it is an honor to be able to celebrate her. Thank you all so much. Okay, Dr. Stevens?
Yes, so, ooh, yes.
Did you want to pass over the individuals addressing the board?
Oh, I did. I'm sorry. Is there anyone who would like to address the board on an agenda item or non-agenda item? Ooh, my lucky day. Thank you. Okay, Dr. Stevens?
Yes, so let the celebration continue. We are so excited to celebrate Telahoma High School's very own Dr. Samantha Stevens this evening. Dr. Stevens has represented our district at all levels of the Tennessee Teacher of the Year competition. She was named Telahoma High School Teacher of the Year, Telahoma City Schools Teacher of the Year, the South Central Regional Teacher of the Year, and was one of the top nine state finalists in the Tennessee Teacher of the Year competition. We enjoyed celebrating her during the statewide Teacher of the Year Watch Party in September. We are really happy to have her here tonight so we can celebrate her once again for all of these great accomplishments. She has represented Telahoma City Schools so very well. Let's appreciate and celebrate her. And we have another amazing educator here that we are going to celebrate this evening. We are happy to have West Middle School's Kathy McMillan here this evening. Ms. McMillan has been sharing her artistic talents with West Middle School students for the last 20 years. Her passion and talent for art is clear, as is how much she enjoys sharing both of these with her students at West Middle. And if you are on social media, you see her sharing all the time, both her work and her students' work. It's an absolute pleasure to celebrate Ms. McMillan as the 2021 Tennessee Middle Region Art Educator of the Year. Congratulations. So tonight we have celebrated two outstanding members of our Telahoma City Schools staff. And while Zach Birdsong is not a member of our staff, he sure feels like one. His love and support for our students is put on display on a daily basis with his incredible reporting and photography of Telahoma City Schools athletics. I have to be honest and share with you that Zach was one of the very first people, persons, or people I followed on social media before I arrived in Telahoma. I was taken aback by the excitement and positive spirit he always displayed when reporting on athletics around the district. Win or lose, the tone with him is always positive and celebratory. Zach has a gift for capturing emotion and moments between athletes that are truly second to none, as the photograph you are seeing depicts just beautifully. His pictures tell a story all by themselves. It is no surprise that this amazing photograph took first place for Best News Photograph by the Tennessee Press Association in September. Zach, thank you for the great work you do for championing our student athletes through your gift of photography and journalism. Congratulations to Zach.
How great.
Yes. Such a great picture.
We're gonna need to...
We might need to move that.
Pat, maybe you can move it.
Sure.
Thank you so much, sir.
You're so cute.
Yes. Thank you so much.
Oh, so wonderful to celebrate. And for those of us that got to hear the band, continued celebration. Wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. I still have chills. Thank you. Moving to the consent agenda, we need to have a motion to approve the minutes as presented. Okay, a motion made by Jessica Fogarty to approve the minutes as presented. A second?
Second.
Second by Teresa Lawson. All in favor, raise your hand. Passes five. I don't know if we need to check on Sid or not.
He's all right. He'll be back in a second.
Okay.
I just wanted to mention it so you wouldn't say 60.
Okay. Moving to unfinished business, we are in our work groups now and we're going to have the first report from Work Group Building and Grounds by Pat Welsh.
We, Maintenance or Building and Grounds, rather, met 9:30. We had a great time looking at all the differences been made at Central Office. And it was told at that point that from the regular budget, they were able to replace the phone systems. They were extremely old and there was a great jubilation in the Central Office over the new phone, new phone system. And I think there was still a little bit left to do floor-wise. Is Jason here? Mr. Ray here?
Yes.
That's still to come, is that correct?
Floor.
Floors?
Just in the kitchen, yes.
Okay. OLG, that's done a lot of work for us, is developing specs now on the radius, on the track radius that's closest to us now that we've had the drainage problem with. We have already done some, a lot of work. There's two receptacles that are in the corner of the end zones and they are forming very well and they will take on more water. But we've got to be able to drain the... Right in that radius is a little bit of a low spot and OLG is supposed to get back to Jason soon about a recommendation and some specs before we bid it. The van room access doors still on the schedule, but there's an engineer that's developing the specifics of that and working with our contractor, Lee Cole. The fieldhouse flooring, that building is the newer one as you're facing it from here. It's the building on the right that was named after Mr. McClure. The area of where the weight room is has been completely replaced and that, I think, floor was close to 30 years old. The, there's another room closer to us that Old Wrestling Mat was in and that's been there 20 or 30 years, in horrible condition. And part of that's been replaced, but there's a little turf section that's supposed to be put down that's had some problems due to COVID. I'm not sure if it's manufactured that can't get full shift going because of it or what. We were told that they could not finish during the fall break and it was COVID-related, but they expect it to get finished at Christmas time, Christmas break. If you have not been over to east, I don't know, Teresa, if you've been there recently, but it really looks good.
Not since the meeting, I haven't. Not since the meeting, but I'll get over there.
You'll notice a tremendous difference. The tiles have been, all the tiles, I believe, have been replaced and our own maintenance team has already started on the lights. And there's two or three hallways that Dr. Dillahay walked me into today that all the lights match now.
Oh, good.
Oh, it's, it is really, really nice.
Well, when you, when you look, what happens is when, it's like, you know, in your own home, when you, when you do something in one room, it sort of carries over to the next. So when we did all that great stuff, you could see, you know, it stood out, that lighting.
When you repaired one light in one room and then you compared it to the other eight, it was horrible. So they're all, they're all going to be, it looks really nice. And Dr. Dillahay and Mr. Ray and the installation contractor met today. Dr. Dillahay's got a pretty good long punch list that they're working out to, before we can go to get a check to them. And the next place, of course, working ceiling tile will be at Bel Air during the next break. Are there any questions or anything I've left out, Teresa?
I can't think of anything.
Thank you. We'll have another meeting before our board meeting.
Thank you, Pat and Teresa, and the whole, the whole team of people on that committee, on that work group. That is a lot of work. Thank you very much. Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Report by Jessica Fogarty.
Okay, guys, the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Group, which moving forward will be just abbreviated CIA. Our group had our first meeting with our new members last Wednesday and Susan Fanning presented information related to the, related to the ELA curriculum that was purchased for this school year. Her presentation provided an overview and the components of Benchmark, which will be used in all of our elementary schools. The Hard Court Package, which will be used in the 6th through 12th district wide, and then the I-Ready Program in reading and math. There was also discussion around the feedback from teachers regarding the new curriculum. And while there were certainly challenges, and I think that's as we expect with anything new and definitely in light of the massive demands of technology, infrastructure worldwide right now, the strengths seem to outweigh those issues. And the discussion regarding this purchase was overwhelmingly positive in nature. The board greatly appreciates the effort made by the teachers to select a quality ELA curriculum and wishes to reiterate their commitment to continued purchasing of such necessary tools for providing the best instruction for students. Also, information was provided regarding the duties and funding of two new positions, the K-2 Reading Coach and the 6th through 8th Literacy Remediation Intervention Coach. This work is seen as invaluable to providing necessary support to students and teachers in our district. Finally, the meeting concluded with a brief discussion highlighting future concerns and areas of work, one of which was the idea of including greater opportunities for exploratory offerings at the middle school level. This discussion is slated to continue at our next meeting, which is set for mid-November, and the intentionality there is so that it's prior to the board retreat so that we'll be able to bring back more information. And I welcome any questions, but if anyone had any questions, I could also let you look at this lovely packet, which we were presented with, so that might even give more details. But if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to try my best.
Thank you all. Sounds like you all had a really good first meeting. Very productive. Thank you to Amy and Sid also. Thank you, thank you. Okay, I'm going to do the policy recommendations tonight. We worked and updated policies. Remember these, these numbers. Remember them. I'm going to ask you to call them back. 1.108, 2.100, 2.201, 2.202, 2.300, 2.401, 2.404, 2.600, 2.700, 2.703, 2.800, 2.801, 2.805, 6.302, 6.309, 6.316, and 6319 as presented on first and final reading. Are there any questions? Do we have a motion to accept?
Moved to accept them all.
Okay, so the motion to accept was made by Amy Dotson. And a second? Pat Welsh, okay? Very good. Okay, okay, great. Thank you so much. I think Amy and Pat made it and I heard Amy first, so I'll just go with Amy. So the motion is to adopt, adopt updates to policies, all of those numbers, as presented on first and final reading. All in favor, raise your hand please. Motion passes 6-0. Thank you so much. We have continued work to do. We are making our way through the policy manual and we are stuck on a few and we're going to work through those and get through another section. So we're feeling very good about that. Moving to new business, Dr. Stevens, Spring Club Sports.
Yes, all club sports must be approved by the Board of Education prior to beginning their activities. Policy 4.303, speaking of policy, defines a club sport as extracurricular athletic activities sponsored by community organizations under the auspices of the Telahoma City Board of Education. The following club sports are presented for board approval by the Athletic Director. The Telahoma High School Club Sports: Swimming and Bass Fishing. The Middle School Club Sports: Swimming, Bass Fishing, Baseball, Softball, Boys Soccer, Boys and Girls Bowling, Boys and Girls Golf, and Boys and Girls Tennis. Administration recommends accepting the Spring Club Sports as presented.
Give me those again, please.
Yes, at the high school level, swimming and bass fishing. Middle school level, swimming, bass fishing, baseball, softball, boys soccer, boys and girls bowling, boys and girls golf, and boys and girls tennis.
You're welcome. Do we have a motion to accept the Spring Club Sports as presented? So move. Motion by Teresa Lawson to accept the Spring Club Sports as presented. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Pat Welsh. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes 6-0. Thank you very much. Now Superintendent's Report.
Yes, it was great to welcome our students, faculty, and staff from fall break last week. Of the 3,562 students across the district, we welcomed 82% of them to the traditional setting and 18% to the virtual setting. Quarter two promises to be a fast one with staff and students enjoying a full week off of the week of Thanksgiving, returning for three weeks to then wrap up the quarter before the winter holiday begins. After our return from fall break, we had two days of staff vaccine clinics resulting in 150 flu vaccines, two pneumonia vaccines, eight shingles vaccines, and 10 T-DAP vaccines being given to our staff members, thanks to Walgreens for coming out to our schools. November 4th, the Health Department will be coming to East Lincoln Elementary for student vaccines. The Health Department will also be coming to Farrah Elementary for student vaccines on November 6th, West Middle School on November 10th, and East Middle School on November 12th. We certainly appreciate the partnerships we have with the Health Department, especially at this time where these vaccines are certainly needed. Our marching band, as Ms. Usleton alluded to, did an exceptional job performing today prior to the board meeting. I must admit that I have enjoyed listening to them play at each home football game and especially enjoyed their halftime performance at the homecoming football game on October 2nd. Now for an athletics update. For middle school, the club sports of cross-country volleyball and girls soccer have all had a very productive fall. Cross-country had multiple boys and girls qualify for the state meet, the Knoxville Youth Activities State Meet. Our girls finished second in the region and our guys finished fifth in the region. The region was made up of teams that have qualified for the TMSAA state championships. Our club volleyball team finished with a 15-3 record, 10-2 in the CTC, that's the Central Tennessee Conference, and a second place finish in the CTC tournament. We had three players named all-conference, Isabella Lidstrom, Josie Shelton, and Olivia Spencer. The middle school girls' club soccer team finished their season with a 9-1-1 record and won the CTC tournament championship. There were 34 young ladies involved in the program with the JV team sporting a 4-2-and-2 record. Way to go. The football cheerleaders consisted of 16 members with five young ladies being selected UCA All-Americans. The girls were able to overcome the adversities of COVID. They were able to rework stunts and routines quickly due to the virus. This is a very talented group of girls. The squad also did well enough with their fundraiser to help purchase new uniforms. And at the middle school level, the football team finished second in the CTC and fell short in the CTC Championship Bowl Game. Now on to high school. Boys golf finished with an overall record of 32, 31, and 1, finishing fourth in the district tournament. Andrew Cardozi, a first-team all-district pick, was our top golfer, finishing fourth in the district and fifth in the region tournament. Girls golf finished with an overall record of 46 to 7, finishing as district and region champions. Our girls finished sixth in the state tournament to wrap up a great season. The Cats were led by district medalist, region medalist, and District Player of the Year Mallory Tavrook. Grace Hicks was also selected, first-team all-district, and Coach Barry Bishop was selected the Coach of the Year for District 8. Volleyball finished with a 12-13-7-7 district record. We had our highest finish since moving into the District 9AA with a fourth-place finish. The JV finished with a 12-9 record while the freshmen went 3-3. With 24 out of 27 players set to return next year, the program has a very promising future. Asia White, Emery Saunders, and Emma Thomas were named to the all-district regular season team. The volleyball boosters split the cost of a new net system and purchased new uniforms and AccuSpike hitting machine as well as other extras, totaling nearly $15,000. Girls and boys cross-country seasons have been wrecked by the COVID virus as numerous meets have been canceled. They will run in the region championship on October 27th in Murfreesboro. Girls soccer has played through numerous virus cancellations, injuries, quarantines, and were put out of the district tournament by Nolansville. We are currently trying to use the special COVID rules to extend their season by scheduling several more games for them to play against other teams that have been also put out of the tournament and have missed regular season games due to COVID. COVID rules this year are allowing teams to play games they were unable to play due to COVID while not pursuing a title. Soccer was put out of being able to pursue a district or state title, but still will be able to make up contests for the sake of play and competition. Football is currently 8-0 and trying to finish the last three games of the regular season. One more win will qualify us for playoffs, two wins. With one being against Nolansville, we'll make the Wildcats region champions. So we just need this win this Friday. Boys and girls bowling is just now getting underway, opening the season with a victory and continuing that winning streak as they are now 4-0. Last but not least, the TSSAA reclassification has begun. In football, we are either going to be the smallest 5A in the state or largest 4A in the state. Interesting how we might be one or the other, but we'll see how that turns out. In basketball, baseball, and softball, we will compete in 3A in a four-class system, which is new. In the sports of volleyball and soccer, we will either be small 3A or large 2A. We expect track, tennis, and golf will remain in the large divisions. We think wrestling may drop to the small school division. We will keep you posted once these reclassifications are finalized. And that is it for my report.
Uh, what a great report. So many wonderful things.
An upgrade, yes, please.
The girls golf, after they won the district, the region is, then they go up against everybody south of Davidson County, which is Rutherford County, and there's about eight huge schools there. And Telahoma won that and Mallory Tavrook was the regional champion.
Yes.
And they finished them the following week. The state tournament finished sixth in the state. They had really a great year.
There is a lot of pride. Go Wildcats!
Lots of great things going on. In fact, the girls soccer team, I think, is playing tonight. And what is going to happen if we win, when we win the football game Friday night, doesn't that mean that we have a long stretch of, potentially a long stretch of home games?
The last win made us, where we're in the, worst we'd finished in the fourth, fourth spot, which is four teams are going. This week would make us...
This week would make us-
Region champions.
-region champions, which we have not been for a while. And we would host the first round, probably, I think, the second, and there's a, there's a chance, depending on who wins on the other side, that we could host the third round also.
So our band is very excited, because the more wins, the more they get to play and perform.
That's right. That's right.
And concessions, they're very important.
Right. Great report. Thank you so much. Dr. Stevens.
Thanks for the upgrade.
The City Board liaison report from Alderman Blackwell.
My son is down here with us. Can you take us to find him? He's in the city building. Thank you. Sorry, I'm going to scan it, because it's just easier with him at this point. So I talked to the city, and I have a couple of things. The first thing that is not so great news is that we have a real sales tax for this month. The county one is very low due to no landlord this year. And we have just got $700,000 reduction from last year for Coffee County. This will be that revenue that would have gone to GCS normally. There are two schools that could reuse or slash, so just what those numbers look like at the hole. And then the chambers work for the event on a competition for the theme of this year's Christmas parade, and schools with the best idea wins free entry, and I'm super excited to thank you guys for doing that and partnering with us with our account for that the Christmas parade is for our town. This is also really exciting news that she chaired me today, that I can't wait to get off to the public gathering. We have nearly all donations of land that we need for that new plant in a Voca intersection to move forward for sidewalk. So, sorry. So the next couple of weeks, the draft needs, and then we'll go to design, but that's awesome news. I think it's gonna get that, we'll actually be able to make that a little safer, the spot for everybody, I think, that's a important part. Also, Jennifer, we want to make sure to thank Dr. Stevens, Principal Quigge, and Dr. Zimmerman for survey data and lots of support. And this is with our pitch to TDA, Shark Tank and Investors, which is happening this Thursday, October 22nd. We'll be picking the eighth academy for great five to twelve creative talent paneling for the advanced tech jobs today and tomorrow, as it all makes Tullahoma community focused the folk, not my words, a community where they'll help us to lead the areas and have a career up their tree. So, obviously, that'd be great. So that's all I have for now, and if y'all don't mind if I leave after.
That's fine. Thank you so much.
Someone's teething and angry.
I think he seems fine. Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank y'all.
Rupert, where was the, where's the sidewalk?
He's playing in a Voca.
How far down the Voca will it go?
You know, I think it's trying to link up to that part that hits at-
Fairways.
Like around race. Do you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, which would be across the street from Fairways.
Yeah.
Great.
Pat, where we've had the trouble.
Right, that was, we'll point that out. Yeah, that's very near.
Definitely a safety issue. You know, safety.
Yes.
Yes. Thanks, Rupert.
Of course. Thank y'all.
Great, thank you so much. Dr. Stevens, Personnel Report.
Yes, the personnel changes for the month of October have been provided to you in your board packet.
Great, thank you. I have just a couple of things. First of all, thank all of you so much for all the extra work you do in your work groups and with webinars and delegate assembly and all the things that you do. It requires a lot of time, and I appreciate it so very much. I am going to send you a Title IX webinar. I had even spoken with Amy about it, but I'm going to send it to all of you. It's the short, shorter one. I did a whole day Title IX day. It was, what, seven, eight hours? I don't know.
Seven hours.
So I should thank Dr. Stevens and Dr. Norris and Jennifer Matlock, who also did that webinar during their fall break, and it was an all-day, lots of information webinar. But the one that I'm going to share with all of you is maybe a one hour, and it is excellent. It's an excellent webinar, so whenever you get a chance to watch that, please do.
Has that already been sent to us, Kim?
I'm going to send it. Yeah, I'm going to send it to you. I just wanted to give you, tell you what was coming first before you, before you got it. During the November board meeting, we are going to use our BOE Connect, and we're just going to have it, like today, I've just had it in front of me, okay? So don't anybody panic. I would be the one that would pan Pat, and I would be the ones that would be panicking. But, but today, just on my phone where I can't really see, it's good. It worked, it works very well. All the report that I gave or that Dr. Stevens gave is all written on there, so you can follow along and have that information and refer to it anytime you want. It's going to make things a lot easier for all of us and for Sandy and for voting, so we're going to just try that at the November meeting, just having it beside us, following along. We'll be patient with each other, and then at the retreat, we'll do a little, we'll dig in just a little bit extra. And who needs to schedule maybe a one-on-one with you, Sandy? Okay, okay, perfect, perfect. She'll send some emails. I'm sure I'm going to be getting one of those. Although-
Obviously, she's not willing to name names. I haven't even hit a list.
Obviously, she's not willing to name Pat Welsh and Kim Usleton, even though we've already had one meeting.
It was great at TSBA, I'll tell you that.
Yeah, oh, good. Oh, good. Great.
It's going to be a great upgrade.
I think it'll make a big difference. Is there anything else to come before the board?
One thing. Congratulations, and I think you've done a wonderful job today. Yes.
Oh, thank you, thank you. I think I should have been a little bit more prepared about the one thing, but thank you so much. Thanks. I just appreciate all of you, and I appreciate all of you coming. Thank you so much. I need a motion to adjourn, please.
No move.
Motion by Sid Hill to adjourn. A second?
Second.
Second by Jessica Fogarty. All in favor? Passes 6-0. Meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone.